There'll be a replacement.
Okay, I call the Finance Committee to order at 5:32. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Present.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Ellenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Avery. Commissioner Shoemaker.
Present.
Commissioner Kuzina.
Here.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Okay, I need approval of the minutes.
I'll move it.
Forward.
Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We now take a few minutes for public comment to the committee. Is there anybody that wishes to address the committee?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Joe Crepel. I'm president of the Genesee County Parks and Recreation Commission. Before I get started on my comments, I want to thank Commissioner Ellenberg for her support over the years of the parks, and it was greatly appreciated. And you see the evidence throughout the county and...
Light the lights.
Commissioner Davis, thank you. You are also a member of the Park Commission, and once you're a member of the Park Commission, you're always a member of our family. So, thank you for your work on the Parks Commission. I'm here tonight to express concern on part of the Parks Commission that there's many items that have come up that the Park Commission has not had an opportunity to have any input in. One of those tonight is on your Finance Committee budget of the wage rates for our seasonal park employees. We adopted a budget in this last summer, and we had wage rates in there that are not what are reflected on your sheet tonight for your possible approval. And that's just one issue that if there was going to be a change in something, that we'd like to have some communication and have some input on how it impacts our budget and how it impacts our operations. Another issue is the bonding issue. The Commissioners, I believe, passed issuance of bonds for the parks. Park Commission did not have any input in that. And again, we're just asking for a line of communication to be open so we can have some input in those issues. You appoint some very, very good members to the Park Commission. Lot of highly talented people, and we'd like to have our input valued by this Commission if possible. I'm open to suggestions on how we can do that, but definitely we would like to see some communications so it doesn't feel like we're being overlooked in our activities. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Is there anybody else from the audience that would like to address the committee? Anybody else from the public going third time? Yes, go ahead. State your name and residence.
Hello, everyone. My name is Amoril Collins. Sorry I'm late. I wanted to come in today and address an issue that I think is a public issue. I'm here to discuss with this Commission the continued unfair labor practices of a local labor union, IOTC 21, 201, excuse me, which is the International Alliance of theatrical stage employees. 201 is a chapter that they have here in Flint, and they are responsible for building shows at the Whiting Auditorium, Capitol Theater, the Dork Federal Center, and the Bauer Theater. Yet, since its existence, 201's existence, since 1913, this union has failed to be representative of the whole community in its hiring of employees. In 113 years, 201 has only admitted four people of color into its international labor union. Now, this is a labor, international labor union. This isn't a family-run company or anything. It's supposed to be equal opportunity for everyone. To attain membership, an individual must first be sponsored by other members. Now, I know that this is kind of like an old way of doing union things, but the voting in as members, I think that a law passed in 1935 that says everybody has a right to join a union and/or form a union. Additionally, union members must pay a $500 application fee.
Yeah, that's your two minutes.
Mr. Chairman, can we please have him continue through to the end?
Go ahead.
Sorry, excuse me, I didn't realize it was going that far. Under federal law, these labor practices are illegal because every American citizen has a right to join a former union, as I just said. Absent from this union is also an apprenticeship or outreach programs to expose or train all interested members of our community. Therefore, I am requesting this Commission to investigate this union for unfair labor practices and possible discrimination. I also request the Commission to allow the formation of an auxiliary stage hand union that will allow fair opportunities for all entertainment workers in Flint. I know this might seem like a small community to everyone. It's kind of like a unknown community, but there's a lot of men and women who come to work every day on time. They do the best to put on the best entertainment that our community comes to these venues to see, yet these memberships of this union has just been passed down for 113 years from father to son. And that's really, you know, unfortunately, that's the history of IOTC when they first started. But yes, I'm here. I'm a 22-year stage hand. Just to let you know, that's why I'm addressing this issue. But I'm not the only one that feels this way. I'm the only one that's, I don't know, brave enough or stupid enough to address the issue. I won't say stupid enough, but I think these practices are very unfair, and, you know, I think the community should do something about it so it doesn't continue for another 113 years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, through you to the Corporation Counsel, for this gentleman's benefit, would the County Commission have any jurisdiction over the topics or the issues that he referenced? I want to make sure that he doesn't leave here without at least some indication of whether we have the ability to do anything for him.
This is the first I'm hearing about this, but maybe you read my mind, because I don't think this board has any jurisdiction or authority over this particular union.
So, and I'm not trying to put you off, sir. I just want to make sure you get good information about where you need to go. My guess is that at the federal level or the state level or both, you would want to pursue something through the, maybe the U.S. Department of Labor or at the Michigan level, the equivalent, if that's helpful to you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I did have a conversation with Mr. Collins, and I'm familiar with IOTC and their labor practices. I think he has filed a complaint previously with MERC to no avail. I invited him to come to address this board with hopes that we can at least send a letter to the Michigan Employment Relations Commission to help or to advise or to counsel Mr. Collins on what steps he can take next to remedy this problem. Like I said, I am familiar with the labor practices of IOTC. He speaks the truth about them. It's been a closed shop forever, and whatever we can do to assist...
Maybe you could, just a suggestion, I don't know what the answer is, but if you could speak with corporate counsel and then come up with a resolution for next week that we could look at supporting his position.
Thank you.
Would that be acceptable?
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I would also like to offer one other course of action for Mr. Collins. A couple of weeks ago, I attended open house for the Michigan Department of Civil Rights that just reopened their office here in Flint. They're located in the State of Michigan Building right here downtown, and so I would suggest that that be another course of action, too. They have a number of investigators there that can investigate issues like that.
Is there anybody else? Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to address the committee at this time? Is there anybody else going the third time? All right, public com... Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I'll wait for you to close public comment. I want to follow up.
Okay, I close public comment.
Yes, sir. Okay, the concerns that was raised by the Chair of the Parks Commission, not for us abated and exhausted now, but I'd like to understand who may be able to follow up and figure out, you know, what are the concerns? I also want to make sure that there's clear understanding about, you know, the role of the Board, the Parks Commission, the role of this Commission as kind of overseer of all of the Commissions, and also the role of the department head as well, and make sure that there's clear understanding among all as to what that looks like. I'd also like to understand what the engagement looks like, where it's appropriate. There may be areas where it's appropriate and other areas where it's not. I don't know of where, you know, the Commission may be gauge, you know, engaged or not, and if some of that engagement is directly with the department head versus the Board and so on and so forth. So, I just want to understand that better because he's brought the concern to the board.
I hate to interrupt you.
No, no, I'm all done.
Earlier today, I had a conversation with somebody from one of the other departments with concerns about communication, and maybe that's something that we can look at moving forward into the new year, you know, how to better communicate amongst all the departments. You know, I know I've talked with Josh a little bit already earlier today and with Derek on the issue I was dealing with, so maybe we could include that, too.
Okay, sure. I'm good. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, seeing none.
Commissioner.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. John, hire.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just real quick, as far as parks goes, and if there's other departments concerned about this, one, obviously, communication's always a two-way street. You know, there's a... It goes both ways, but in addition, hopefully, when we get in our new building, a lot of this stuff, everybody will be housed in the same location, and that'll make communications easier. I know parks is out in its own little island out there, and I've been a strong supporter of bringing them downtown with us because I think that would help communication if they were actually in the same building as the rest of, well, the County Board and the Administration. So, just moving forward for everyone to think about, I know we don't have a ton of room down in that building, but still a thought to think, to put in, put in your cap.
Yeah, there has been some talk of that moving forward. I don't know exactly where it's at other than the talking stage of bringing them into the same building.
I just see a huge benefit. You know, originally, when we were looking at buildings and looking to consolidate, we talked about putting everyone under one location because we believed that would be best for our residents, especially when they're seeking services. And in addition to that, it would be wonderful for our staff because guess what? Everyone is in the same location, and sometimes, you know, phone messages and calls are great, but actually, sometimes, sitting down face to face, and if they don't have to drive 20, 30 minutes to get there to have that conversation, it's just an elevator ride or a walk to a different department. I think that would be beneficial. So, this next year, we've got some decisions to make as a board, and I think this is one that, you know, I'd like to hear from you, Marty. Also, what other departments may be in the future you could tell me are having some problems with communications, though? I'd like to know.
Well, it was the Road Commission that talked to me earlier today, which is actually, you know, separate, but yeah, you know how it works.
Super. Thank you. Thank you for indulging me.
Is there anybody else?
Yes. Yeah, so two items that were mentioned at the podium was the wages, which you are going to vote on tonight. It's been a directive of this board that all of our staff be paid at least $15 an hour, and that's what I instructed the Parks Director, who is the Board's liaison with the Parks Commission, to do and to present, and that's what is on the agenda tonight for you. If that was not communicated to the Parks Commission, I can certainly take that up with the Parks Director and make sure that that's handled correctly moving forward. The other item that was brought up was the bond, and as was discussed when this was presented to the Board, we included $5 million for the parks should they need to use that moving forward because they have a number of large projects that they have been trying to self-fund over time, and if anybody's been in our parks, our parks need a little bit of work. So, if that was not communicated through our Parks Director, I'll make sure that our Parks Director does a better job of communicating with the Commission that he oversees.
Thank you. Just one follow-up as we close this out, two pieces. Thank you for that clarification. Important piece about in terms of our department heads liaisoning with those Commissions, that's important, that that conversation takes place. And then, you know, for Commissions or any employees throughout the county who may have, you know, any concerns they want to raise or maybe something else they want to talk about, certainly, we have the Chairs of our various committees, that different, you know, groups we're all under. We have our Director of Administration, and we have our Board Chair and Vice Chair as well. So, you know, for any staff, any department heads, certainly, there are folks on the Board that folks can reach out to if there's some concern or question, but I'm comfortable with what you share. And certainly, on the $15 for employees, you know, I was one that raised that, one of others that raised it, we want to work fast to approve anything we can to make sure we don't have employees of the county making less than $15 an hour. Thank you.
And I want to be clear, this is not an us versus them, as has been played out in the past. We're all on the same page. We're all Genesee County, and we should all be moving in the same direction, and we'll make sure that we are able to communicate that across the county.
Absolutely. Thank you for the indulgence, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Anybody else? All right, moving forward, is there any communications? We already did it.
We did.
Thank you. Any old business?
No old business.
We already took care of that.
Took care of all the old business.
Okay. I'm just being goofy, but any rate, new business. Resolution 24-609, approval of request to create, post, and fill one public information officer Freedom of Information Act FOIA specialist at the Genesee County Sheriff Department. This request will eliminate one corrections deputy position.
Move approval with a question.
Support.
Okay, Dr. Brown.
I'm just, I know we have a Freedom of Information Act person in the main office in the Administration Building, so can you talk a little bit about why there's a need for it in the Sheriff's Office as well?
Yeah, I can speak on the FOIA piece of it. The Sheriff can speak on the other piece of it. Since we've gotten body cams and dashboard cams, that is a very time-intensive process in going through when we receive a FOIA for that, and really, the Sheriff's Office needs somebody dedicated to that specific task. I think the way that they, they say it takes for every minute of video, it takes six to eight minutes of review because you have to go in and redact and manipulate that, or not manipulate, but, you know, make sure that there's nothing inappropriate released to the public. So, we receive a crazy amount of FOIAs in our office that are not video and the video that take up all of our person's time, and then the video is something that's relatively new to us that is taking up even more time. So, I think right now, they have a detective maybe assigned to that, and he can speak to that better than I, who's trying to do that on top of other duties. They need a FOIA person dedicated full-time for that.
Thank you.
I don't know if I answered your question, but...
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On average, we get 300 paper FOIAs per year. With an addition to body cams and now dash cams, we are over 600 for 2024. To Mr. Freeman's point, dash cams and body cams are requested now by defense attorneys, prosecutors, and insurance companies. When an officer goes on scene, whether it's an accident, a shooting, they request all the body cam and dash cam footage. Three officers show on scene, that's three dash cams, three body cams. It's insurance for the county. I have nobody in the Sheriff's Office assigned to that specific task, to the point, we have detectives that do it on top of their normal duties. We have one detective that is the point person to work with the county's FOIA because ultimately, it's my responsibility and your responsibility to fulfill those so we don't violate court order. This is a well-spent position that I am redirecting funds from a corrections position. That's how important it is. By far, the individual that I have identified has experience in it. You have to have somebody very, very schooled in editing because you have to redact personal information, redact information that could be protected under HIPAA, and then to deliver it under discovery or any kind of a civil request via subpoena. It's very, very technical, and the request will only get greater and greater. That's why. Thank you for asking.
Anybody else have any questions or concerns? Mr. Shoemaker? Thank you, Mr. Chair. One, I'm a little concerned because when we've talked before and in negotiations, we're short-staffed as it is in the Corrections Office, so this seems to be almost a conflict here because if we put ourselves in liability's way because we are short-staffed and one of our officers does get hurt because we're filling this, are you concerned with that? Because I'm concerned with it.
Absolutely. We just passed our budget, started October 1st. The need for this is exceptional. We have 125 corrections deputies assigned to the jail. I have nine open spots. I would love to ask the Board to fund it out of general fund and not take away from the staff, but I don't feel like that's going to be one that's going to get me to the finish line to get this position. If there's something that the Board could come up with as another funding source other than redirecting corrections funds, I'd love to hear that, but I try to make it an easy financial decision for the Board. We always try to hire, but to your point, you're right. We are short-staffed in the jail, but I look at the risk benefit. We've got to get these FOIAs out. I have lieutenants doing FOIA requests at their home because Wi-Fi at their home is faster than at their office. It takes two hours to download. That lieutenant who is assigned to a detective spot is not doing their job, and to your point, Commissioner Shoemaker, you're right. I wish I could add more people to the jail and more people to the road, but I don't have that option.
If I may, please, continue. You're talking about some of the requirements for this position. Do you have somebody in place? Has this person already been in law enforcement?
No, no, sir.
Would, and excuse me for being naive, but it would seem like this would be important they also have a knowledge of law enforcement when they're, you know, going through videos. Now, as far as the rest of the FOIA information, do they have a background in anything to do with FOIA and how Freedom of Information Act works?
Right.
Anything else like that?
To the first point, it actually, it works against my position to have law enforcement try to do video downloads and editing because they're not good at that. And you have somebody that is excellent at editing and looking at video, and it's very specific what the FOIA's request, and the FOIA law is very specific in what we can give them. And what we do give them, there's a check and balance to the county's position to make sure that we're fulfilling our obligation and not going overboard. The person that I have identified is also one that's schooled because FOIA is very objective. It's very specific what we do, and if there's more that needs, then we set up a budget, and if the person wants to pay it, then they pay it. So, I'm purposely seeking a non-law enforcement person, but one who is schooled in video, editing, and understands the world of law.
If I may continue, Mr. Chair. Will they be doing any other duties or just, just FOIA?
Well, that's the main duty. I mean, it says in here as a POI, but everybody does that. I have a whole team that does that and beyond. I wanted to add to that duty just in case I needed them to message, to communicate in preparation for anything in the future, but I can tell you, their main duty will be editing and fulfilling video FOIAs with paper FOIAs.
Now, if there are... Here's a concern because you're not just dealing with videos, correct? They're going to be dealing with anything if it's a FOIA request to your office, though, that's not video-related.
So, it could only be paper and/or video, whether it's jail, body cam, or dash cam.
So, when you say paper, what are we talking? What's it look like?
So, records, reports, personnel records, anything an insurance company may get to not only just litigate their case, but record-keeping. That's why I said, on average, we get about 300 paper FOIAs that are just record-related, and we go back and we pull up police reports and accident reports, anything paper-related, about 300 of those, and the additional requests are all video-related.
Do we do a background check on these people?
On all employees? Like the one I would hire?
The one you...
Oh, absolutely, yes. We, there's a whole common procedure through HR that everybody gets hired is to do a background as well as ours.
Just one last question. I promise I'll quit. Sorry. You know, I'm always a fan of letting everyone apply because sometimes you get a better person, just like with everything else like that. Where did this person come from? How did this, you know, did you find this person that's qualified out of the blue? Yeah, I mean, and why do we not send it out? Or why do we not want to send it out to see if someone else who is more qualified might be out there?
Well, I have a very qualified candidate and one that I believe in and I've known for years, and it's almost like you would if you saw a need. You fill the need with somebody who has the talent and the ability and the desire... You fill the need with somebody who has the talent and the ability and the desire, and I found such a person.
But again, let me clarify. We don't 100% know he's the most qualified person, or she could be for this position, though, right? Because we don't, we haven't looked, other than this person, or have you, you've sent out?
Well, I can tell we've done FOIAs. In fact, when I was a detective, I know what a FOIA request fulfillment looks like. I know the temperament and the ability and the skills that are needed. I'm sure if we went on a search, we could probably find somebody that may be better, but the individual that I've identified that I brought to the board, I would ask you to trust my judgment as a co-laborer and a leader to pick the right person, and they will serve. And if they don't fulfill, then they're out. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Just so I'm clear, Sheriff, this is a completely new person.
Yes.
And then, then you're taken off from the roster, the need for a deputy corrections deputy.
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood. Yes.
I have a clarifying question, Sheriff. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sheriff, the the position that's being eliminated, is there a person in that position now, or is that a, it's a position that hasn't been filled?
Right, we have nine open positions, and I'm redirecting the funds on one of those to this position.
Okay. I think, I appreciate the creativity on this one. It'd probably, I'm sure, create more efficiency of the other personnel that you have kind of breaking away doing this. I did have some concerns, but I was taken offline about, you know, I heard a piece about the wifi and folks having to process it from home. Salute to those.
Yes, sir.
Members of your team who are going over and beyond to do that, they have some concerns about, you know, servers and so on and so forth, but I'll raise those at another time. Thank you.
Sir, anybody else? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Resolution 24-1364, approval of Amendment Number Two on an agreement between Genesee County and LADS, Genesee LLC, in an amount not to exceed $63,981 to provide drug and alcohol testing services for Genesee County Sobriety Court. The cost of this is from... Is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-1365, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Flint Odyssey House in an amount not to exceed $244,464 to provide substance abuse treatment services to Genesee County Sobriety Court. The item, the term of this agreement is from October 1, '24 through September 30, '25. The cost of this agreement paid from the following...
Support.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, a few meetings ago, and I keep bringing this up, and it's, it's something we've mentioned for years, the fact that this is October 1st. You know, we...
I didn't hear you.
You can't hear me, I'm sorry. We keep having these issues with things being brought to us late. We're two months past the point of when this has taken place or should have started. You know, we've asked for it to be corrected. We've continued, I think as a board, continued to support that ideology. Can I get an excuse why, again, it's, it's late?
Thank you. Dana Baumgart, 67th District Court, probation officer and sobriety court coordinator. I was here at the last commissioners' meeting, and you asked this question to several other people, and I have a very similar answer. We get our grant awards at the very end of September, usually the last week of September, which then has to be approved, and we can't make our budget or contracts of how much we are going to need until after our grant awards are approved first. I agree with you, it's not the best system, and it's not ideal, and I think we're doing the best we can.
Thank you. My, my problem is with this is, is there something that as a board, we should move our budget back when we approve our budget? Because are we approving this budget in advance, and we don't even know we're getting these funds? Is that what I'm understanding?
I guess my answer is, is that I've ran into this over and over. It's not just this department and this particular issue, but so many times when the money's coming from somebody else, we don't have a lot of choice. It just works out that way. I know the CDGB money is like that frequently. It's hard to do things that looks appropriate as far as time-wise, but it's kind of after the fact on a number of things. And I know that they've answered this before, but in this particular case, it's my understanding they really don't have any other way of getting around it. Am I reading that correct?
Correct.
Mr. Chair, just to the budget question, when we adopt our budget, wouldn't make a difference here. We're required to have our budget adopted by, I think, the end of September. They don't get their grant award, you know, notification until the time probably after we get our budget, even if we delayed it to when we get our budget adopted. So, they get that in the end of September. You know, they try to get on the October schedule to get the grant approved, and then once the grant approved, we don't want to approve contracts before the grants approve, so it's just a cascading effect.
You know, it's, it's one of those things. One, if you're a resident, you're probably sitting there thinking, well, this is the way it's always been, this is the way we do it, and this is the way we continue to do it. And I realize we're dealing with state and federal dollars, and that makes everything a little more difficult. I'm just wondering, is there a way we could pre-approve? Because they know what they're applying for, for the grant, and then if we have to make a change or alter it later, we could do that so it's not showing up late. So, when I'm looking at the agenda, she probably wouldn't have to come up here, because guess what? We, if I'm asking about something that's late, it's really something that's valid then at that point.
We can look at those options and try to make a change.
Does that make sense? Because I, I don't want to have to have people up here, but, you know, I've been here, I've been blessed enough to be here for about six years, and it just, we have certain contracts that have really stuck out there, and we have certain things like this. And I understand there in that situation, they have no say over what the state or federal government does, certain groups, but maybe we could circumvent this by changing the way we do things and adopt it in advance. Then if we have to come back and alter that resolution, then we could, if they didn't get the grant, because obviously, they know what they've applied for.
Well, you know, I've shared your frustration with that over the years, and I guess in this particular case, I kind of gave up. There's other ones that, yes, it could be done better, but, you know, as you just suggested to Mr. Freeman, there might be some ways that we can look at...
If we could, I would appreciate it.
Make it move forward better.
If we could, I would, I'm sure they'd appreciate it, because then I'm not saying...
Yes.
Explain this again. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, want to make sure I'm in the right spot. Am I in for?
Yep.
Resolution 24-1414, approval of a request to create, post, and fill one scene investigator position at Genesee County's Medical Examiner.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Shoemaker?
Is this a budgeted expense, then, or a replacement?
Our medical examiner could come up and speak, but this is a continuation of what the board started earlier this year, where we're bringing some of these positions in-house and eliminating contracts.
Yes, thank you. This is a budgeted expense. We're taking the money to fund this out of the scene investigation budget to fund the second position.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Hunter.
Thank you.
Motion 24, or Resolution 24-1434, approval of a grant award from the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration in the amount of $341,543 to provide for the continued removal of the Hamilton Dam. Budget for this grant is attached.
Support.
Is there any comments or questions? Mr. Shoemaker?
Just a statement, whoever went out and found the way to allocate these funds, great job. So, that's not someone I would think would be involved in this process, so I think they thought out of the box.
Government is complicated, isn't it?
Sure is.
Anybody else? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-1437, approval of a request by Genesee County's Park and Recreation Commission to fill a maximum of 400 seasonal pooled positions at, in, I'm sorry, FYE 2025 with positions and wage rates taking effect January 1, 2025.
Move.
Support.
Is there any comments or questions? Mr. Shoemaker?
This was brought up in public comment, and I know communication was across there. Is, is there an issue with their budget, then, when we passed this? Not that I think we should change our policy, because we did, we want our people who work for the county to be rewarded financially and fairly.
Well, I don't know, is Joe still out there?
Patrick's there.
Okay, Patrick, I'm sorry. I didn't see you, Pat. Does that create a problem?
Um, it does a little bit. So, we're looking across the board, about 100,000 that we have to find in the budget. You know, we definitely can. The problem is some of the grant-funded positions and programs, you know, we're not, we're not able to just absorb that with mileage funds. So, for some things, like Keep Genesee County Beautiful, you know, that's just going to be $8,000 that we won't use for, you know, City of Flint improvements, but it will go towards wages. So, you know, it's definitely something that we, that we can absorb.
But you're going to have to move around funds, you know. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, through the chair, how much do we have sitting in surplus or reserve? Do you know? Unspent, or?
Uh, right now, I believe it's about $3 million.
Okay, so I think we'll be, I think we'll manage to take care of people. Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Patrick. Resolution 24-1461, approval of a, of the creation of an additional Executive Director of Community Engagement for the Office of Genesee County Sheriff's Office.
Move. Support.
Is there any comments or questions? Mr. Shoemaker?
Is this a replacement position or a new position, or?
Could the sheriff come up and speak?
Mr. Chair, I appreciate the question, because again, I wouldn't bring you something if I didn't have an answer. This is money from our state Give Grant, which is a grant thanks to former Senator Jim Adenick. It's a fully funded grant position that costs no county funds, no matches. It is for three years, and it's specific to reduce gun violence, which has a number of variables. In addition to that, it's a non-union position, and the budget is very cut and dry. So, if there's any concern about legacy costs, we answered that. But I will tell you that the results of these two positions that I have are stunning. And to add one additional one, it takes, again, to a question that was raised earlier, the right person. I'm not easily flattered by individuals that seek to help if they don't have a background and a ability to do it. And the one that was selected over many, many years is the right person for the job, who stands with me to my left. And if you think what we're doing right now is working, just keep putting in the right spots, the pieces with me, and it'll continue to work, I promise you.
Is there any other comments or questions of the sheriff? Seeing none?
Mr. Chair, if I could...
Go ahead.
Sheriff, you've got two folks in this position right now, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And their title is also Executive Director of Community Engagement?
They are introduced as co-executive directors, correct?
I see, okay.
They work together, and this would be no different.
Okay, and for the benefit of the commission, I think we all know who these folks are, and it's no secret. Could you mention their names so we have some sense of how this person would relate to them? And bring, if you would?
Yes, sir. The first two that were hired in 2021 into '22, after two years of volunteer, was John Allen Bay, who did 29 years as a returning citizen, Percy Glover, who did 12. To my left is Taurus Simpson, who's not a returning citizen, but comes from a very tattered background. He said he spent 80% of his life in the law and 20% in the gospel, so he understands what loving and what helping and repairing brokenness is. What he'll do in his main area of focus is going to be the jail and those in the jail. And so, I introduce you to my left, Taurus Simpson.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Sheriff.
Well, provided we vote yea.
Good point.
Excuse me. Is there any other comments? Yeah.
I just want to say, I, the sheriff was introducing me to this gentleman this, this evening when I just walked into the chamber, and I took one look at him, and I remembered his face from back in about 2003, from actually being in the transition moment in my life in terms of churches. I was transitioning from a church I grew up in to, my mother finally said, we can go out on our own, if you will. And, and I remember visiting at a church, church with a friend of mine, a good friend of mine, and somehow she ended up getting me to get up real early to go to Sunday School, which is the class, you know, educational class before the actual worship service starts. And I walk in, and I remember his face. He was the teacher in that classroom. And when we left that room, I remember, I don't know him personally, but when we left that room, my, I talked to my friend about how personable he was, how impressionable he was, how practical he was, and how he truly came across as someone who really cared about us, young teenagers that were sitting in that room. And so, you know, I can't talk about what he's done vocationally, but what I will say is, it was good seeing him tonight, because he had an impact on us that day back some time ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd.
Mr. Chair, that begs a lot of questions about whether Mr. Lloyd was a good student that morning. Do you, do you remember how he behaved himself?
He was good. Chair, if I may add one more thing, please. Commissioner Shoemaker brought up a great point, and two items ago, about the Noah Grant, whoever did that, that he appreciates the good work that's being done. I want you to know, I've got a great staff, and the work that we've done to build relationships with our state and federal partners, since I became sheriff, just in the last fiscal year, we've received $3.8 million from our state funds and $3.3 million from federal funds received. That's over $6 million in non-county general fund money to do the work that we're doing as co-partners. So, I just want to say, I appreciate you recognize that, because getting money from the state and federal government is not easy, and when you have somebody like this that's getting results, we can all share in that success. So, thank you very much for trusting.
You sent, recently sent me that information in email, and I probably should have shared that with people, but I appreciate you bringing that up.
Appreciate you, sir.
You know, because you was challenged in the past to go out and, you know, and get that, you know, because we needed the money to help here, and you've done phenomenal.
Thank you so much.
And I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anything else?
Thank you.
Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks, Josh.
Resolution 24-1478, forwarding to receive and file a copy of the paid county bills for the weeks ending, excuse me, November the 3rd, 2024 through November 17th, 2024, in the total amount of $17,742, well, $212.81.
Move. Or?
Is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-1482, approval of a proposed budget amendment to 2425 appropriations resolution for various line items as described in the attached budget adjustment.
Promoved.
For.
Is there any comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-1490, approval of a purchase order to Hospital Purchasing Services LLC for the fiscal year ending 2025 in an amount not to exceed $58,856.48 to provide for kitchen equipment at G Card. The cost of this purchase order is paid from the following account.
I'll move it.
For.
Is there any comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 241492, approval of a request, request to increase a purchase order to Gordon's Food Service. Purchase order 24-02771 for the fiscal year ending 2025 in the amount of $27,894.50 for a revised total of 1,254,118.70 to provide for the purchase of food service products and cleaning supplies at G Card. The cost of this is budgeted and paid from the council listed.
I move it.
Support.
Is there any comments or questions? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-1499, approval to create, post and fill one public health nurse coordinator position at Genesee County's Health Department. The cost of this is fully grant funded.
Promoved.
Report.
Is there any comments or questions? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 241-1504, approval of a change order to the agreement between Genesee County and Sentinel in the amount of $49,033.35 to provide for additional door and video access points at various county buildings. The cost of this order is paid from the council listed.
Promoved.
I have motion and appro, second, I believe. Mr. Shoemaker?
Didn't we already approve something to this company before for this same equipment?
We did. And as we are going through buildings and installing, there's areas, additional areas that departments want eyes on, or doors that may have been missed that they want to have a key card access to so that they can control and monitor who's going through those doors.
If I may, Mr. Chair, just from a standpoint of, I don't know what the process was, but obviously economies of scale will kick in if we were to bring them all this at one time instead of bits and pieces, I'm assuming. So, I just.
Yeah, I believe that they're still on site working, so. Mike is handling this project, so you can speak to him.
Yeah, thanks for the question. We're, we're getting the same pricing as, as was offered in the original order, and the people doing the work are still on site doing that original contract. So, in terms of economies of scale, we're doing the same thing.
Well, here, just, just a simple thing. This is, I guess, Mr. Chair, if it's okay for me to continue, I'm sorry.
Yes, continue, please.
This is what I'm talking about. If, if I'm going in and I'm going to buy a car, I'm going to get a better price than buying three cars. And I tell them I'm doing it at once, where if I come in one at a time, they're not going to bargain as much. So, what I'm trying to talk about here is the fact is that I think we would have had a little more leverage. And I don't know how the whole situation worked out, but if we would have actually come with them saying, "Hey, we need $200,000 for the camera and equipment" instead of $40,000 at a time or $49,000 at a time. Just, that, that's my perspective as a business owner. I mean, you know, I, I made large purchases before and, and put out pricing for large purchases before. And I just wondered how the process went down and why we didn't do it that way to begin with. Because I think, my opinion, years of experience, that generally gets us a better price. And obviously, you know, it's not our money. It's the residents' money, the taxpayers. So, that's why I'm just asking. So, is it something, is that part of this communication? Think we didn't communicate with all the departments before?
No, I, I believe this was an over-million-dollar contract, was it?
Originally, it was 1.7 million.
And as part of the ask to the company when we went out to RFB, we asked for like single pricing so that if we did run into these as we started to roll this out and we kind of saw where there was a deficiency, we would have that unit, unit cost if we needed to add something down the road.
We, in fairness, we, we, we did anticipate this happening. This project was one of the larger ones, and we didn't really know for sure if we'd covered all the grounds. We tried everything we could do. We had a cross-section of various departments as part of the committee that made the decision and indicate where their needs were. What we found out in many things, we talked about communications earlier, is that not everybody got the memo. And we didn't know who not, who not to get the memo of. So, it was like that. So, as we now install them, people are saying, "Well, wait a minute. I want one of those." We're getting that kind of stuff happening. It happens when you have the original, the old way of doing things, where everybody just did things on their own. And so, no one knew whatever else is doing. That's what they're used to. And we tried to do this as a sort of a blanket way for the entire county, create one standard. And some people are very much on board about doing something like that, and others have to be sort of let along, saying, "This is better for you." And that's the result. I think financially, we're not really paying a penalty in this particular case. I can see your example makes a lot of sense, but in this case, no. It's, we, it was a very large original order, and we got guaranteed pricing for a year based on that, that original order.
Actually, I'll just bug you later. I have a question about the technology piece of it, so I'll, I'll talk to you later about this. No one's doing that here, but thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mike. For this next resolution, we have a substitute that Mr. Freeman handed out a minute ago, but I'll read the substitute for this. Approval of ARPA funding reallocation of $2,290,486.73 for prosecutor scanning Fenton Township, Land Bank, Cloud Road demolition, and to continue funding of ARPA positions for court backlog.
Move it for discussion.
Support.
Okay, Mr. Wayho?
Mr. Chair, just wonder if, to start, if Mr. Freeman would walk us through the difference. Obviously, there's a, a price difference, if, if I can describe it that way, but anything else we should know?
Sure. So, if Crystal and Derek, who did the bulk of the work on this, want to come up in case I miss something. So, we had initially set aside almost $1 million for demolition at the GVRC and using ARPA money. ARPA money has to be allocated by the end of this year under an approved contract, or it has to go back. So, we're kind of like running up against the, the gun here. We, we expected the demolition cost to come back higher, but when we put it out to bid, it came back about half of what we expected. So, we needed to then include that 400,000, 430,000.
About 455,000.
Yeah, that we need to put towards something. And what we did is we put it towards eligible employee costs for positions that were previously approved by this board that were funded at our, with ARPA through the end of this year. But this will allow us to extend that funding out for additional time.
And when we budgeted to cover those positions at the beginning of ARPA, the guidance at that time was you could only fund them through 123124. Towards the end of ARPA, they came out with a clarification. I guess a lot of people were asking about that, like, that didn't go away. Could we still fund that through 123126? And so, there was some clarification on that, that we can cover for those additional two years. So, that's part of why we put that back in there.
If I may, Mr. Chair, through you to whoever can answer, I'm assuming the prosecutor scanning is digitizing their paper records? Is that right?
Yes. So, they had originally been budgeted, that million dollars that was approved. They had an additional amount that was remaining of that $10,000. So, Tammy had called and said, "Since you're putting some stuff on the agenda, would you mind seeing if we can cover that $10,000 with ARPA versus their annual budget?"
Okay, that's understood. I just didn't, I mean, I inferred what it meant. And I have walked through prosecutor latent facilities and know that there's a lot of paper in there. The next one, I wonder, it doesn't say what the project is, so what is Fenton Township?
So, yeah, so we actually got a request from Fenton Township to do a waterline extension. And so, that is what that particular project is. So, it's right around their, I think it's around their high school. Don't quote me, but it's right around their high school.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments? Mr. Shoemaker?
Through the chair, these positions we see on here are funded with ARPA dollars through, what's it, end of '26? Or is it?
Currently, they're budgeted through the end of 123124. That was under the original ARPA guidance. We had these projects that came in under budget. So, you know, they all came and expressed their concern over why they still needed to keep these positions. So, this is a way for us to use some ARPA funding to cover those positions a little bit longer. So, it'd be through 12, well, not all the way through 123126. We gave them, tried to give them a proportionate share of whatever was left over to cover them longer. It won't get them all the way for the two years, but it will cover it longer than we had originally anticipated.
Thank you. Could I ask, thank you, Crystal, can I ask for a list of all those positions we have approved and when they will stop being funded by ARPA, like a date?
Yeah.
We would have, so we would know because we're going to have some decisions to make as we move forward. And as, and I know it's a ways off, and to some people, it seems like it's far off, but it really isn't. You know, before long, we'll be approving a budget for '25, '26.
I already have the list together. That's how I came up with the amount. So, I can put in there the dates of how long it will fund them, and I can get that to Josh to distribute.
Thank you so much. I would appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I just lost the lens out of my glasses, so bear with me. Thank you, Crystal and Derek. Resolution 24-1517, approval request to create, post and fill two planning specialist positions at Genesee County's, excuse me, Metropolitan Planning Commission. With the approval of this request, two planner positions will be eliminated. This is a grant-funded request.
So moved.
Support.
Is there any comments or questions? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-1524, approval of a request to create, post and fill one constituent relations representative in the board office. This is a budgeted position.
I'll move it.
Support.
Is there any comments or questions? Mr. Shoemaker?
What, explain to me this position of what they're going to do, for, for my knowledge.
Yep. So, the board has kind of put on us through this last year that you want to do more deliberate outreach into the community. We started that with some of these forums at the senior centers that a number of you participated in. We want to, we want to do activities like that where we get you in the community and talking about the services that Genesee County has to offer on a regular scheduled basis. And we need somebody that can kind of work with us to make that, to make that happen. In addition, it's going to help respond to constituent requests that come in. We have nine members in our office, and really, there's two of us that are dedicated to that type of work and help with it. And then, as part of the budget this year, we did include funding for, for this position. That's just a couple of the things that we're looking to do.
If I may, Mr. Chair, more of a comment than a question. Since I've been down here, I've watched that office continue to grow and grow and grow. And yet, we keep telling our other departments to cut and cut and cut. I, I'm going to vote no on this because I, I believe it's, it's a bad example to the rest of our departments when we keep telling them to sharpen your pencil, sharpen your pencil, sharpen your pencil. It's right before contract negotiations with our employees. I just don't know how many more people we need for a town, our county that's shrinking. We are not growing in population. We should be focused on that. If we think this is going to help us grow in population, great, vote for it. I don't see how that's going to benefit. That department, the expenses on that department, I don't know what the numbers are, but I would have to say since I got down here, probably tripled. But yet, we're asking the rest of our department heads, every time they walk into a budget meeting, you need to give this up. We need, we need more of this. And we've been very fair with them. I think the finance chair's done a wonderful job, and I don't think you'll ever, I've ever said differently, but I just, I don't agree with this. I think that kingdom's getting too large, and I'm a no on it. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Wayho?
All right. So, I'm, I made the motion, and I'm in support of it. As I understand it, this individual would be a hire of the Board of Commissioners. I don't see Mr. Freeman, but that's what the job description says, and would report to each of us and support each of us in terms of our constituent outreach and our ability to serve our constituents. We are a very large county, whether we're shrinking or stable or, or what have you, or potentially growing, given economic development opportunities. We are a large county, and we each have thousands of constituents. I, I personally don't think it's too much to ask for one individual to serve nine members. I'm trying to get the word out about not only what we do as a commission, but even more importantly, the services that this county provides that probably 80% of the people don't know about. So, my view is this individual would work with other departments, get a real good understanding of what they have to offer, and then work with us as individual commissioners to spread that word. And hopefully, it would be a much, much bigger bang for the buck than what the salary is for our constituents who will know of things that they didn't know about before. And so, I'll just finish that, you know, legislators, which is what we are, typically have individual constituent representatives or, or people serving them in this role. I think it's, I think it's reasonable to have one person for, for nine members, so I'm in favor of it.
Did I see some hands?
Well, I've been here for eight years, and basically, this resolution is basically kind of doing what I've wanted from the very beginning, is being able to get our message out to our residents. And if this, you know, person that needing help can call in and basically leave a message to one of the commissioners saying, "We'd like to know more about, you know, our senior centers and what they offer," or, you know, what their services are. I mean, this person's going to be able to do that. It's hard, I mean, as commissioners, to spread yourself all around your community, and you do your best, but there's still things that myself, I find out and go, "Wow, we have a service that offers that?" That, you know, this person's going to be able to know that service. And I mean, we have a service with Michigan Works. It's called MRS, and it helps people with their hearing. And I wouldn't have known that unless I went to my doctor, and he's like, "You have a program." My doctor told me we have a program. So, my doctor shouldn't be telling me that. We should know that so that we can share that with our constituents. And so, I feel this is something, I mean, I've been in public service for 17 years, and having someone be able to get that message to, even if it's at a chamber meeting, you know, those people are community servants. And, you know, that might be where that person has to go. It's like, you need to go to attend your chambers so that you can spread the word through them because that's how it's going to get done, is by word of mouth. We've tried other ways, and it just doesn't, people don't see it. You can send mails, they don't look at it. You know, they watch it on TV, and that's a good way. Radio might be another way of advertising. But I think this is probably one of the best things that we've probably going to vote on tonight. So, thank you.
Mr. Lloyd, did I see your hand earlier?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would this person also handle constituent complaints? Good.
Or guide them?
Dr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would add that I, I would characterize our request of departments in a way that asks them to be fiscally aware of their budgets. We have approved several positions tonight during this meeting. And I have, I just returned from a, a county commissioner school this week. And one of the things I found from talking to fellow commissioners around the state is that they have similar positions like this. And I, I was surprised to find out that they have that kind of connection and support for constituents that is absent here in Genesee County. And we are one of the top five counties in the state of Michigan. And so, I agree with what my, some of my fellow commissioners have pointed out that in a county of 400,000, more than 400,000 citizens, we can use, we can definitely use somebody, somebody in this capacity.
Yes, Mr. Lloyd?
Thank you. I was interested to hear a perspective of all of my colleagues, and so I wait, oh, Commissioner Davis, did you have some you want to add? Okay. I wanted to hear the perspective of all of my colleagues because, you know, in this budget, the last budget we did, actually, the previous one as well, this was actually a request that I had and that I made directly to Mr. Freeman. And I actually asked for not just one, but I actually think I asked for like three or four. I asked for the ratio to be one to every two commissioners. Because when you look at other counties and you look at the load that we have, I mean, I remember sharing a person when we were city council people. And in my district, as a county commissioner, I have like three wards plus, you know, Mount Morris Township, you know, portion of Mount Morris and stuff. My point is this, that, you know, here we are, we're elected to serve the constituents of our districts, and we, as commissioners, we don't have individual staffs. We don't have individual persons that's dedicated to each commissioner. And that's why I thought that even one is still light for the amount of constituents we have. For me, my concern is more so about how our office is structured, more so about, you know, the residents as well, understanding what that structure is and who's reporting to who and who's doing what. You know, as my. You know, as my colleague said, Commissioner Shoemaker, that, you know, we have added, you know, additional staff to our office, folks who are doing great jobs. I mean, Jared has been, done great work, he's been added to the commission office, Jerome Theroquel, and so many others. But they're not staff that report directly to the county commission. You know, my understanding with this position is that this person isn't reporting to us. My understanding at, in discussion was that this is a person who may report to Jared and help out with some other things around communications, which I'm not going as far to beat that up or whatever case it may be. What I am suggesting is, as a board, I think that we need to have a discussion that we haven't had in the last two years, at least that I've been here, about what do we as a board desire for our office to look like, you know, in totality? You know, what, 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 what support staff, you know, roles, and then also have org charts that reflect whatever that is. We don't even have an org chart that shows what that looks like. It's not beating anybody up. I'm saying, you know, I'm, I'm going to support this position tonight, but I'm looking forward to a larger discussion about our office. And then I want to double back and double down on something I already said. When we did this budget, this was a piece that I, that I requested be a part of this, and it's one person, but I think that it still does not go far enough to make sure each commissioner has the support that we need to be able to do the constituent service work that we do in our district, to be able to host events and town halls and to, to put together communications to communicate with our, our residents. You go down to Wayne and you go down to Oakland and county commissioners are sending out communications to their districts, talking about what they've supported and what's available. We don't even send out mail-ins, you know, to our districts. So I think that, you know, in terms of communicating with our residents, making sure they understand not just what we're doing as a group, but individual districts need to understand what their sole county representative is doing specific for them. And so I just wanted to say that I look forward to having, you know, in this coming year, a larger discussion as a board, doesn't have to be lengthy, but to have an understanding about what we want to do so we can prioritize those things, you know, when it comes to our next budget. Thank you.
Is there, Mr. Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mine are less questions, again, more along everyone else's lines of statements. Some are in response to things we've said, mentioning getting the word out. I believe we do have a public relations person that we have on payroll as of now. So, word out to the residents, that can be done with the staff we have. We talked about positions that we've put in place tonight. Those are grant-funded or they substituted those out for other people? They were, they were not new positions, we were adding to these other departments. If I could though, right now, if you could get me and Mr. Freeman, right now, all the positions we have in that office, working right now, if you could tell me and what their job duties are. Because I thought a lot of them were supposed to, when we put them in place over the last few years, handle a lot of what I'm hearing this individual we're going to hire is going to do. So if you could go over those positions, what's in our office, so I know, again, which and our residents know.
You want me to do it right now?
If you would, yes, please, I'd just like to know.
Yep, so there's me. There's our office manager secretary, she does all of the, she's the boss, I tell people. We have a FOIA coordinator that deals with FOIAs. We have a communications director who looks globally at communicating for the county, not just individual commissioners and doesn't respond to individual commissioner constituent service type requests. I mean, he does, but, like, there's nine of you. And then we have an org development coordinator who works with staff in the county.
And then, obviously, John's still there.
John's here, yeah. He's, he works ten hours a week.
No, I know, but he's, he's a valuable asset, I don't want to leave him out, I mean, from there. And, but, my, my point is, is when, when I got here a few years back, and not saying that all people aren't needed, but it was much smaller, we still managed to function. Since then, it's continued to grow, continued to grow. And I believe a lot of these concerns you guys have are already, can be handled by people sitting in these, the office already. You know, it's, again, as I will always say, it's not our money. And the fact is, you're saying you want people to do this. We come down here for our meetings, we read our agendas, hopefully. And that's what the rest of our job is supposed to be, answering our constituents, following up with our constituents. That's what I thought it was, you know? So I guess that's where I'm having trouble with this. In addition to that, what I found with these positions is a group that's in charge, as Mr. Freeman always puts it, he says, "Just takes five of you to, to remove me or do whatever it takes." I found that those five tend to get their projects handled by these positions out of this office. I've found these offices to be very political in addition to that. They can say not, but I'm going to tell you, I have. So, like I said, I'm, I'm not going to drag it out because I believe everybody's already made up their mind. Mine is though, one, I believe for the residents of this county, we can take care of this ourselves. And for our staff and our employees, show them that, guess what? We have been riding in high times, things have been very good. We've got a large amount of ARPA dollars that blessed us. Unfortunately, we had to go through some rough times to get it, but those dollars are going to dry up. And those people I had mentioned on this list that we're going to have to make a decision on whether to fire or keep, or let go, I shouldn't say fire, but let go, that money's going to have to come from somewhere. It's going to have to come from somewhere, the prosecutor's office, you know, a few other places on here, crime victim services is part of this, those dollars have to come from somewhere. So you want somebody to go out and handle your, your affairs, okay, but someday that rooster's going to come home and we're going to have to handle those dollars, figure out where they're going to go. And I'd prefer them to stay here if we need to fund things instead of someone in our office. So I'm sorry, I said I was going to stop, and I will. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to ask a question or make a comment?
I do. I know we talked about this a bit. This is a rebuttal to you, Commissioner Shoemaker, because we, we've, you know, had this conversation and I've expressed that, you know, where I am and you know where I am and others, but this is more of a, a comment. The other piece is different. I thought it was odd when I came here as a commissioner, that we didn't have additional staff, particularly because we don't, we don't have a county executive. And so, you know, I remember, and Mr. Freeman knows this, having a conversation with BB behind the scenes and texting him, you know, around the time of, you know, your appointment and changing your title and those kinds of things, because even from the outside, I was saying, "Hey, I think this is right for the county" and so on and so forth. But I, I think the county, this isn't a negative, I think the county is, Genesee County's been behind the times in terms of the, the staffing that we've had here, not having a mayor of the county, not having a county exec. We basically just had, you know, the department heads and then the staff and the department, but not the typical staff that a mayor would have or a county exec that helps bring all of these pieces together. And some of the positions that I see help to do that, and I think that there's more, but I just wanted to just raise that about the county exec piece, us not having it and not having the kind of intermediate staff as well, I think also makes a difference. Yep, so, thanks.
Is there anybody else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. I don't think we have any other business to do, Mr. Freeman?
We do not.
Okay, we stand adjourned at six forty-six.
This call to order at six forty-eight PM. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Present.
Commissioner Winfrey?
Here.
Commissioner Ellenberg?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Avery?
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Commissioner Kuzno?
Here.
Commissioner Wayhill?
I'm here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum, approval of the minutes from November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Moved and supported, do we have discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion is carried. Do we have any public comment to this committee? Yes, sir, please step forward, state your name and your comment.
Good morning or good evening, I'm sorry, it's been a long day. My name's Joe Creple, president of the Parks. I need to clarify some of my statements from your last meeting and I apologize, couldn't get into the last meeting, but to speak to your comments about the chain of command, the Parks Commission is quite well aware that we are an advisory board and this board has the final say. But I, but I do need to defend our Parks Director. He does communicate and that's why I'm here tonight. The problem with the wages, which is not an issue of the merit, it's the issue of timing. We haven't had a meeting since, and so we haven't been able to bring it to the full commission, but he does communicate quite well with the executive committee and we've had discussions on that. So, you know, I, I do have to stick up for Patrick and say that he communicates with us quite well, but a lot of these things are timing between your meeting schedule and our committee, our meeting schedule. And as far as the bonding issue, you know, Commissioner Shoemaker, you, you want to know what our fund balance was? We financed the building of the addition to the campground off our fund balance. And so there was no interest charge, nothing impacted our budget, there was nothing negative to the residents of the county and, and it's been a wonderful addition. So we do a lot of our own capital improvement funds off that fund balance. We're very conservative on our budget and our budget depends on, you know, see, our weather is very dictating on some of our revenues. So if we do have a fund balance, then we look for projects to go by. And I, and I guess as far as the bond issue goes, we are just very concerned about the economic outlook coming forward and having to make interest in, in bond payments on, on a five million dollars. And that's, we, we, we just want the opportunity to discuss that as a Parks Commission to give you our input. So I don't know if you have any questions, but just, I, I just had to stand up here and defend our, our director because he does communicate quite well, so, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have additional public comment? Additional public comment? Public comment is closed. It appears we have no communications, no old business. Under new business, I'm told that we are going to drop the first resolution, eleven eighty-four. Mr. Freeman, do you want to speak to that?
We were a little too eager in getting down the agenda, it's not done yet, so.
All right, so we will drop without objection, twenty twenty-four dash one one eight four. Our next resolution, or the first one I should say, is Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one two two four, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Mount Morris Schools in an amount not to exceed one hundred forty thousand dollars to provide educational services for the court, community educational programs. The term of this contract is from July one, twenty twenty-four, through June thirty, twenty twenty-five. The cost of this contract will be paid from account listed.
Mr. Chair, can we move, can we move Resolution two and three, please, since they're very similar?
Without objection. Does your motion apply to the both, Commissioner Brown?
No, because they are separate issues.
All right, so there seems to be objection. Is there support for the first one? We had a motion, did I hear support?
Or.
We have a motion and support. Would someone like to speak to this? Anyone? Discussion?
I'll, I'll just say, Mr. Chair, that I, I did have a conversation with Rhonda about both of these resolutions, because I kind of had the same thought as, as you did initially, Commissioner Shoemaker. But the first one, my understanding, and Rhonda might come up and, and talk about it a little bit further, but the first resolution, twelve twenty-four, has to do with the standard curriculum from the state of Michigan that is provided to the students that are located in the facility. And so that educational program is pretty much packaged curriculum. The second one has to do with something a little bit more intense for, let's see, what was the word, riskier students. And so it's a little more, it's designed to be an intervention for those students. So they are different kinds of things.
All right, Rhonda, would you, I think that was an invitation, so if you would state your name and, and what you do for the county?
Yeah, Rhonda, I'm, I'm the family division administrator. The first resolution, one two two four, is for the education services for our day treatment program. And then number three, one two two six, is the educational program for our detention center. So they are two separate programs.
Okay. Do we have additional discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker?
Right, forgive me, my statement, it was not meant to say they're the same thing, they were similar and trying to expedite the meeting considering everyone was probably behind this, so I will make sure that if there's a slight difference, I will stick to reading them all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one two two six, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Mount Morris Schools in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars to provide educational services at the Genesee County Juvenile Justice Center. The term of this contract is from July first, twenty twenty-four, through June thirty, twenty twenty-five. The cost of this contract will be paid from the account listed.
So moved.
Moved and supported, is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one two eight zero, approval of a contract between Genesee County and Easter Seals of Michigan in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars to provide intensive family support services. The term of this contract is from January first, twenty twenty-five, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The cost of this contract will be paid from the account listed.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, do we have discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one two eight one, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Easter Seals of Michigan in an amount not to exceed one hundred fifteen thousand, two hundred forty-three dollars and three cents to provide a mental health professional for school-based law enforcement involvement. The cost of this agreement is fully grant-funded and will be paid from the account listed.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, do we have discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one three one four, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Vienna Township in the amount of one million, three hundred fifty-three thousand, four hundred twenty-one dollars and ten cents to provide policing and school resource officer services. The term of this agreement is from January first, twenty twenty-five, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. The budget for this agreement is attached.
So moved.
Moved and supported, is there discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker?
I just wanted to state that I appreciate it actually arriving to us before we were actually executing the contract, so.
All right, Commissioner Kuzno?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the, the past contract has been paid for.
Yeah, they, they have agreed to pay that amount. And I know there was a timing issue when their board meets versus now. Maybe Crystal can come up and speak to whether or not Vienna Township has paid that, I think it was around ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's a little under that, yeah.
Can I add something, Mr. Chair?
Corporation counsel? Sure.
I would just say that this morning I put together the contract amendment that added the, the money that was owed from fiscal year twenty-three, I think it was January first, twenty-three, to September thirtieth, twenty-three. So I put that together this morning.
All right, Krista?
You put it into this agreement that we're approving?
I drafted it and sent it to Captain Murphy this morning, or early afternoon, it's been a long day. But I, it's, it's put together, so I've been told that they've agreed to pay it.
Commissioner Kuzno, are you asking whether that money is part of this amount or no?
Well, if you remember right, back a couple weeks ago, you know, they were refusing to pay that amount and so, you know, I raised an objection. And, you know, they, I know have been in contact with Josh, and so I'm just simply asking the question if they paid for it or not. And it sounds like it's in the process and they have agreed to it, so I'm fine with it as long as they've done that.
Okay. Krista? Crystal?
There was a meeting held with them, I think Josh was there, and I'm not sure who else might have attended. They did say that they were going to pay, but they'd had their board approve it first, and we should expect payment around December 12th. So it should be next week. I have asked the financial analyst to let me know as soon as the check's in hand, so I can let you know.
Yeah, and I thought they had a board meeting the other night, and I didn't monitor it, so I don't know what they did.
And this is not approving this contract, it's just moving it to the board so I can follow up with Vienna Township later this week or early next week?
Right, and I'm sure my questions will be answered by them.
Do we have additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion is carried. Thank you, Crystal. Resolution 2024-1419, approval of a request to rename Genesee County Animal Control to Genesee County Animal Care Center.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have discussion? I saw Commissioner Shoemaker first, then Commissioner Lloyd.
Can I get the reasoning behind this?
If you'd introduce yourself and tell us what you do for the county?
I, Director Jay Parker, Genesee County Animal Control. In the last four years since I've been here, we have changed quite a bit. We've offered free clinics, we're offering shock clinics, we're offering a food bank where we're giving out pet food for people that are in need. We actually do span neutering of cats, TNR, which is a crap-nutter release for the community cats that are out there to kind of take care of some of those problems. We're offering so much more to the public than we ever have, and it's very tough to do under the old name that we have of animal control, because I think we've evolved. The county built a wonderful building, they've done so much more to support, the commissioners have supported us in this building and what we're doing. And I think we just need a name change. And I've talked to, I have several contacts that are in the brand, into branding of names and things like that, that are social media, some of the new crazes out there that they do. And one of the things that we have overcome is the old name of animal control. A lot of the places that were built around us, Saginaw, and some of those places changed their names when they redid the building, and I think that was something that we should have did when the renovation took place, to show that we're not the old animal control, that we're not just euthanization. We're one of the, one of the top 10 in the state for, you know, having live outcome of animals. And that is something that we've got a, you know, a rescue coordinator that works on. We have a social media specialist now, that's a county employee that works on. We have a bigger team that actually works on getting these animals out of the shelter, which is why we're not hurting like Detroit and some of those places where they're euthanizing animals for space, because we're actually moving these animals as quick as they come in. We're getting them out to rescues, getting them out to fosters, getting them out to homes, moving them to other shelters where they may be able to get that animal into a home quicker. So I think we put so much work into behind it and just going under the animal control, because I still hear it to this day when I talk to some of the older people in the neighborhood. They, oh, animal control isn't the place, they kill all the animals. And we still are living under that old name. And so I know it's a symbolic change, but I think it needs to happen, and I wouldn't come to you if I didn't believe in it, so. And I've always been honest with everything that I brought from the shelter. We're there supporting the, you know, the constituents, and I think a name change would be a big difference for us. When you look at that and you see, you know, humane society, people see so much more out of the humane society, but we have a better live rate that we produce. And so I think we really work hard for that. So I think a name change is something that we just need to do. And, you know, we can attempt to keep the cost on our middle. Sometimes it's symbolic just with the paperwork and our, you know, and our, you know, social media pages and things like that. Eventually, I want to change the name of the building, too, you know? So that's what I'm looking at doing.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Jay, thank you. I appreciate you and what you've done out there and being part of the change, it's tremendous. But I have a couple concerns with this. One, there's a lot of residents, when they do have an issue with an animal, I mean, this name to me doesn't scream that I have an issue with an animal, and this is who I'm going to call to come take care of it. I have something, you know, there's a dog in the area with my children, or there's kids running around, and there's a vicious dog. It doesn't, if you're looking for that, especially, I mean, for me, if you were to show me that, I wouldn't assume that that's it. And I understand what you're trying to do, I totally, I get that. I'm just concerned with, you have somebody who's in a panic situation, they're very excited, they're very concerned, and what do they do? And if they're going to call somebody, I mean, which they'll probably call 911, which will be directed there, fine, but, and I guess, I mean, there's always many people who look at animal control as negative, I've always looked at it positive. We've always, you guys vote since you've been there, it's been a wonderful environment for not just our animals, but also the staff and volunteers that are over there, so. I'm not opposed to changing, I just think it needs a little more thought into it, I mean, because I, like I said, I, Genesee County Animal Care Center, it sounds like you're going to be cutting hair, you know, I mean, for animals. Just, that's me, I mean, we have a big dog, it gets trimmed and all the other stuff, that's what it kind of sounds like.
We have looked at where they have taken the name and put control in there. You know, it's so close to what it was then, then it's why. And, you know, the whole idea behind it is, you know, we're not the same as we were 15 years ago. You know, it's just, you know, and I think historically, people are still going to use us, even though they see a name change. I mean, there are some people will never change their mind, you know, of what that place was, you know? I mean, that's just a matter of fact, but I think what we do here is, we're showing that there is a positive, we're showing that we aren't the same as we were, you know, that we do so much more than just control. And I just think the additive of control would take away from that.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Like I said, I'm not opposed to name change, I just don't, I'm not, this just to me, for tonight, I'm just going to tell everybody, I mean, I don't know if we could free some funds from somewhere, if we had, I mean, some strange fund that could be used for this, to hire a marketing firm or somebody to come in who are professionals doing this, because this is ends house, right? This name was created, we didn't hire anyone to do this.
No, this is, this is a name that I got from some of the social media influencers that are out there that talked about the change of the name.
All right. Because my concern is that your name, or your brand, you know, as we go out there, needs to, you know, kind of explain what you're doing, or so on and so forth. And, you know, part of the main thing we do, and our residents pay for, you know, because there's a lot of them that want animal control on top of it. And so, like I said, moving forward, for me, like I said, I'm not opposed to it, but I'm going to go no to this name, not to the fact that you want to rebrand it or do anything else like that, because I think if needed, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. If you'd stay there in case others. So Commissioner Lloyd, then Commissioner Ellenberg.
No, I actually, you know, I like the diversity of thought that's represented on this board, and I appreciate that you offered the other side of that, because I did not think about that in terms of how people view, you know, in terms of animal control. I mean, you know, for all of the reasons you mentioned. When I just read the name on the surface, I like it for the reason you mentioned, but also because of how, you know, growing population views animals, you know, furry family members and furry pets and so on and so forth. And then there's a lot of people that call to have, you know, animals, you know, removed, who want them removed but don't want them hurt, right? They just don't want them to be a nuisance on their property and so on and so forth. But what I really wanted to say was this, that Genesee County Animal Care Center speaks to just that location versus the concern for animals across the area and what you do. I would actually prefer for it to say, you know, Genesee County Animal Care Department, you know, versus a center and having it, you know, just focus on just that particular building where you want to change the name, because it is. It's a department of the county where you're doing all of these amazing things, you're doing necessary things as well, but it's actual department and speaking to, you're caring for the animals. But the other piece is, animal care can also be, you know, I'm caring for the animals that's hiding under your, that's chewing up your deck. I'm caring for them, I'm removing them, but I'm doing it safely and so on and so forth. So I'd actually prefer for it to be department versus center, because it speaks of the broadness of what you do. I'm tempted to make a motion to do that, but I don't want to be disrespectful to what...
Oh, no. I'm totally open. Again, I think we just went with the idea of care center, because in hopes of, we're looking at doing some attempts in opening up a animal care clinic, a low-cost care clinic, to support, because we have people that love their animals, they can't afford the vet care.
Sure.
And that's just what's happened. I mean, it used to be they could afford it, now you can't. And there's so many people out there that can't afford to get their animals fixed, they can't afford the shots for their animals. It's not that they don't care for them, it's just they have to make a choice. Are they going to pay their bills, or are they going to get their animal a shot? So I think we're looking at expanding into that, and that's something that I planned in the future of doing, in hopes of, and I've talked to Josh on several occasions in reference to that. In fact, we've sat down, and there's some things that I've got to work through with some of the other places, talking to M.D.A.R. and the State of Michigan on what we can and can't do, and how we can present that. But my idea is, that was with the Animal Care Center that was part of it, so, you know, for the expansion later on, hopefully.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ellen-
Just to close out on this thought.
Oh, sure.
You know, it sounds like there are multiple things that you're doing under this center or this department, right? Animal control is a part of this department, right? The clinics you're talking about is a part of this, you know, department.
Yep.
Again, center kind of limits it just on that location, and I'm curious what my colleague, because we're going to revote on it, right, to move it. I'm curious what my colleagues think about, you know, to some, it's just mere semantics, but it's the changing of the name of a county department. So it's important, and this is a space where we had that kind of discussion.
Commissioner Ellenberg?
Yes, like, I mean, I like the idea of the care, because there's a lot of residents that don't realize that they can bring their pet and get their shots. Some people will think a lot more of their pets than they do their kids. And, you know, if it costs $50 to go take it to the vet, and they can bring it to the center, and I don't know if you charge anything, you know?
On the free shock clinics, no.
They can afford it. And I like the fact that it is a care center. I mean, if they need food, they could contact you, and you have connections, whether it be there or the food bank.
My officers carry bags of food on their vans, because they run into that all the time.
So I like the looking ahead and looking at it as a good place to help animals, not one that you're going to call and say, I have a dog underneath my, you know, deck, but if there's an injured dog, I know you've went and rescued them.
Yeah.
You know, you've been utilized by the sheriff's department when you did 40 dogs, and you basically successfully made them better, and pretty much, they all have homes now.
Yes.
So I think it kind of, the whole sentence kind of stands for what you stand for. And I like the word cares, because I think you do, so.
Commissioner Winfrey?
Yeah, I, you know, I agree with Commissioner Shoemaker that the brand is very important. Folks have to know, who am I going to call? And they're accustomed to calling animal control. So I was just thinking, how would it be if we just said, rename it to Genesee County Animal Control and Care Center, which would save the brand and be inclusive of the care factor?
Kind of like they used to be called the Dog Catcher, you know?
All right.
I would really like to amend the motion to that effect.
Yeah.
So you, would you-
Control and Care.
Okay. Would you restate that, restate it, if you would, the amendment?
Yeah. Genesee County Animal Control and Care Center.
Is there support?
I'll support it.
Moved and supported, is there discussion? Commissioner Kuzno?
We had SPA. You know, I'm being facetious, but, you know, I look at life a little bit different than everybody else here, because, you know, I am a farmer, I do have livestock, I, you know, so I'm going to, you know, I don't really care. You know, I wasn't really going to say anything, because I really honestly don't care. And, but you asked, you wanted to know how everybody felt, so you got it.
Yes, yes.
So that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just go with the flow, it's no big deal to me, one way or the other.
Is there additional discussion on the motion to amend? Commissioner Shoemaker?
Through the chair, how do you think that's going to affect what you're trying to accomplish, what Commissioner Winfrey has recommended?
Well, I have no problem with that. I mean, I've seen, again, we tried to get away from the idea of control as being one of them, but I think historically, people are always going to refer to animal control in a lot of ways. I mean, I, you know, I could say 20 years down the road, I'm going to be old and feeble, maybe, and I would do the same thing, you know, animal control. Yeah, so it's, I think the branding is to show that we're actually more than just control, so, and I don't think adding in control would be a problem. Again, I think it's what we market and what we push, and, you know, it's what we actually do in actions, more so than the name. But we all know that name makes a difference, too. So I think, again, you know, it's very hard when you have, you compete as an open intake shelter compared to a closed intake shelter that takes in the fluffies, the, you know, everything that's perfect, and then we take in the ones that, you know, have broken legs and the pit bulls and the, and anything with a bad name on it, or, you know, the hairless dogs or anything, you know? So it's, we get the rough ones, you know? So we take in a lot of dogs that, you know, that need some help, and so we fight that, you know? We fight that, because it would be so easy in life if it was just a closed intake shelter, and I could just take in anything that they wanted, and that we could, know we could market, you know? But we're there to do the hard cases, because there's the ones that need help. So I think we can work with whatever the commissioners decide, you know? We are more than happy to do that, and I think, you know, again, it's what we make it, and, you know, out of our actions, and not necessarily just out of what words we put in it. So I'm more than happy to look at that as a change. I think it just, change needs to be made.
Like I said, if I may continue.
Commissioner Koo, sorry, Shoemaker?
Thank you for your honesty. Like I said, I don't want, I mean, I don't think anybody's goal was to step on anybody's toes here, I just, like I said, I'm really concerned about residents understanding that, and like I said, I'm fine with not rushing through it, it's a name change that we can handle later on, but I can agree with, if you're okay with it, and you're not going to hurt our feelings, if not, you know, you wanted to talk about it a little more, but I'm okay with, Commissioner Winfrey has stated, or if somebody wants to go back and, you know, change it a little bit, but I do like where he's going with this, because it identifies both, if you want to change your order or whatever. I do like the department thing that Commissioner Lloyd had mentioned, though, also, but, like I said, I just want you to feel comfortable with it, your people, because I'm sure they spent time on this also, and they're appreciated, and their time is appreciated, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go to Commissioner Brown, then to Commissioner Lloyd.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, when I first read this, I thought, wow, I thought it was a wonderful change to make, because we don't really control animals all the time, and visiting your center, I understand all, the holistic approach that you take with animals, and your argument was very well-stated. I think about all of those dogs in Burton at that one house, and how we didn't really go in controlling those animals, we went in to care for those animals, and like you said, now they are placed. So, and I understand all of the arguments, and so out of respect for the residents' mindset, who may be used to that old, you know, frame of mind, and out of respect for the need to evolve at the same time, because I don't think, I think it's more than a symbolic change, I think it's a practical change based on reality and what you do. And so I really love Commissioner Winfrey's idea of, you know, coming to a compromise and blending the two names. I would drop the center, and I was just writing it down in terms of an acronym. It would be Genesee County, it would be G-C-A-C-C, Genesee County Animal Control and Care. I would recommend just dropping the center, dropping the department, dropping the SPA. It could change over and over and over again. So, but if we just say Genesee County Animal Control and Care, that's what it is. That's my two cents.
I'll agree to that friendly amendment.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Winfrey and Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Lloyd?
I was going to make a motion to add SPA. No, I'm just kidding. But listen, so if we're doing this, I think we need to commit to it with resources as well. I'm not talking about something crazy, but I think we should, you know, find the resources I'm not talking about something crazy, but I think we should, you know, find the resources to change the name on the building. I think we should do that. And, um, maybe Josh Freeman, you can work with folks to figure out what that looks like without hurting what they already, you know, the, the work that they're already doing. And then the other piece was about communication to residents as well. I don't know if we'll have a communication coming out, or if there's something that could be added to maybe information you give to folks they call, or online, or whatever case may say, to say, "Hey, by the way, you know, um, we've had a name change," so on and so forth, whatever that is. So, just the two pieces. I think we need to change the name on the building. I, I don't think that's a big piece. It shouldn't be a ton of money. And then the other piece, you know, in terms of having something for residents. Thanks. And thank you, Commissioner Winfrey, for, you know, coming up with something that we all could be good with.
Is there additional discussion?
And your change, Dr. Brown.
Additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So, the motion to amend is carried. Now, we have to vote on the main motion, I believe. Uh, any discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Your passion is admired, so thank you. Uh, Resolution 2024-1479, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Cole Williams LLC, in an amount not to exceed $55,000, to provide the Parent Network Support Series at Genesee County's Juvenile Justice Center. The term of this agreement is from January 1, 2025, through December 31st, 2025. The cost of this agreement is budgeted, and will be paid from the account listed.
So, moved. Support.
Moved and supported, is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. I believe we have an add-on. Mr. Freeman.
We do have an add-on. It is, uh, draft technology use policy, which combines a number of different policies into one. Um, I wanted to get it passed this year, but I didn't want to just throw it at you at a, um, board meeting. So, I brought it here, so you can have time between now and next week to digest this, and ask any questions that you might have. It's pretty standard, just-
I move to add, add it to the agenda.
Support.
Moved and supported to add, uh, the technology use policy to the agenda, is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. So, do we need to move this to committee, then?
Uh, we can, if you can move it to the board next week, if over the next week, you have any questions or concerns about it, we can push it off until January.
So, this would be add-on number one, if someone wants to make that motion?
I'll move it for quick discussion.
Moved and supported, uh, do we have discussion?
I do.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Through you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Freeman, on, uh, page 11, under remote, remote work. I'm seeing that that is the, is that the only change to this policy?
Uh, no, that, we include, we already have a remote work policy.
Yeah.
We're just including it in, in, um, this technology use policy.
Because I see, it, because that's the only highlighted part, that's a part of this, what you-
Oh, I don't-
Provided to us. It says, "Comment, uh, include in definitions distinction between remote and hybrid work." I, I, I'll get to what the concern is. Uh, in the first sent, the second sentence, where it says, "Remote work arrangements are determined based on the role's requirements and are authorized upon the user's start date." That's very definitive, there's no ambiguity. And there, you know, I'm thinking about, you know, maybe we should have something here that allows for some flexibility. You know, a role could change after a person's hire, and there may be a necessity for them to work remote. I just don't want to be locked, you know, have you locked in, then we got to come back and change it.
Yeah, here, remote work is, I'm, uh, doing a shot clinic off-site. Um, hybrid work is the work from home, um, which I think is what you're trying to get to.
No, this says, "Remote work," so that's working from home. Arrangements are determined based on the role's requirements and are authorized upon the user's start date. Same concern. If there's a change, this locks you in, because it says you can only make it one time when they're hired. That's all I'm, that's all I'm raising.
Okay.
Maybe there should be flexibility to say his, you know, it'll be communicated as determined, or whatever case may be. But that's it.
Commissioner Brown, did I see your hand, or?
Um, you didn't see my hand, but I do have a comment.
Okay. I must have read your mind. Go right ahead.
I, I would just, um, offer a suggestion to add a glossary, to kind of define what that is in, inside of this policy.
It's under definitions on seven and eight.
Is it already in here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have additional discussion? Add-on number one. All those in favor, uh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. We do not appear to have other business. Government operations is adjourned at 7:22.
Comments to this committee? Any public comments to this committee? Public comments are now closed and no communications, no old business. New business, Resolution 24-1407. Approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Valley Area Agency on aging in the amount of $852,936 to provide for home-delivered meals for seniors. Term of this agreement is from October 1, 24 September 30, 25.
Support.
Propriedly moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Resolution 24-1408. Approval of an agreement between Genesee County and VAAA allowing for a decrease in funding as the result of grant changes.
Move approval with a question? Or I make the motion with a question?
Proper. Properly moved, supported. Commissioner Dr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wondered if somebody could explain the implications with the decrease in funding and why it occurred.
Good evening. Pamela Coleman, Director for GCard. Yes, ma'am. Our funder, Valley, informed us that this particular year was the latest that they had ever received their federal portion of their funding, which is our portion or allocation that we received from them. And they did not receive that and notify us until July of this year. So it was much less than we had originally agreed upon. And it was, as they say, out of their control. It was the allocation that they received from the federal allocation.
Commissioner Ellenberg.
Are you done? I had someone that was basically needing some assistance. Is the funding, the decrease in funding, because they were needing meals on wheels, and was they were told that they have like 500 people on the waiting list for that? Is there anything? I mean, if we are, doesn't VAAA kind of help with the meals on wheels also?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I mean, we've, we got 500 people that's needing meals. How do we improve that?
How do we, how do we approve the?
To help them. How do we get those people to get the service if we're decreasing?
The only thing that I could, well, this is really a question for Valley. They can best explain how they advocate when they go before the legislature to advocate for more funding. We can only go by the budget that they give us and a number of slots that they allow us to deliver.
So basically, we talked to Valley about maybe asking for more because, I don't know, just 500 people without being able to get the service kind of bothers me.
It's, it is, it's a huge decrease. It was a huge disappointment, and it was one of the reasons, Commissioner Shoemaker, I know you don't, I appreciate you giving me grace, that our FY25 budget was late coming because they normally don't receive, she said, their, their grant awards until like January, February timeframe. And because of the FY24 budget having such a huge decrease and GCard being completely grant-funded, we had several discussions, and I told them, we can't operate in this vein, not knowing what we're going to get if we operate on the previous year's allocation. And then there's a huge decrease at the end of the year. It runs a huge risk for us to be at a deficit at the end of the fiscal year. So they were able to give us a, a portion of our funding for this year because of what happened the previous year. But again, the executive director for Valley would be the best one to have a discussion with as far as her methods for advocating for additional funding for this nutrition services program.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Wayhile.
Did Mr. Shoemaker before me?
Mr. Shoemaker?
No, no.
Okay, all right. So I, I'm having a little trouble following because partially I can't hear very well.
Sorry.
But I, I think I heard Dr. Brown ask about the implications for the reduction. And I know that you, you described how it occurred or why it occurred, but what exactly are the implications in terms of what you, how many people you had planned on serving versus how many you will be able to serve? Is that in the documentation that we have in Legistar?
Yes.
I'm trying to find the page, and maybe that's what you were referring to?
Yes.
It's not as intuitive as I would like. And how much is the total reduction? We planned on what amount and we're getting what amount?
For FY24, the original agreement was $1,294,453 for congregate meals. That was reduced to $1,123,171. And the, I'm sorry, that was for the home-delivered meal portion. And congregate meal was reduced from $344,122 to $320,654,000 for a grand total of?
$90,000.
I'm sorry?
I mean, 90 and 100,000 dollars.
So between home-delivered and congregate, the reduction grand total is 90-something thousand? Is that what I heard Mr. Freeman say, and that's what you're confirming? Okay. Is that actually on the documentation that we have or just the numbers where we ended up?
Because, no, well, that, the, the difference is not. The actual, or what the sum total of the difference is not on there. But in the discussion of agenda item number two, you'll see the reduction amount on, on the.
Okay. So it's about $90,000. And what are, back to Dr. Brown, I'll quote her again. What are the implications of that for what you had planned on doing?
We, we have, Valley worked with us for FY24 because we continue to serve based on our original agreement. So they were able to find some additional dollars to fund additional clients that were already served. But their position this year is the, there will be, there has already been a reduction in the number of clients that will be served for FY25 in both home-delivered meal and the congregate sites. We have, and you all will probably be receiving some phone calls because we've had discussions to let them know that, that the changes in the agreement that we've received from Valley, we will know, we can't continue to service the number of clients or provide the number of meals that we've provided in the past. And the grace that was given from the commissioners on last year to augment those carryout meals at the congregate sites, we don't have that funding this year. And unless something else happens, we have to operate in the vein of the language of this contract, serving the number of meals.
And if I'm right, through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Coleman, the supplemental dollars from last year were from the senior millage, right? Or senior services?
That's correct.
Okay. And obviously, that was a one-time allocation to bridge for the senior centers. Question that I should know the answer to, are all congregate meals at senior centers? Or are there congregate meals that we pay for in other locations?
They're at the senior centers.
All at the senior centers?
Senior, I'm sorry.
So anytime we buy a congregate meal or pay for one, it's, it's consumed at a senior center and nowhere else?
What's considered a senior center? We have some apart, there's an apartment complex that's on our list.
Yeah, there are other sites.
Okay, other sites. That's what I was asking. All right. And so the implication then is that some of the seniors who are either served at those additional sites, apartment buildings, et cetera, and at the senior centers may not get fed as much as they're used to through congregate meals?
That's a true statement.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Director Coleman.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Brown.
Mr. Chair, just a follow-up question for Ms. Coleman. Is, is the, is this the result of a change in state policy? Or was the grant received late because of some other clerical issue or something? Do you know the catalyst for why this occurred?
I cannot answer that question. I have not, when I asked Valley, they weren't able to answer. The only response we received was, we've never received it this late. We don't know why. We're just now getting it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Ms. Coleman. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. Resolution 24-1430. Approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Voices for Children in an amount of $29,194 to provide community consortium facilitation. Term of this agreement is January 1, 25 through December 31, 25.
Promoved. Support.
Propriedly moved and supported. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. Resolution 24-1493. Approval of annual funding from MDHSS, MDHHS, for various local public health programs in the total amount of $427,340.
Move approval. Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. Resolution 24-1495. Approval to accept annual funding for local health department cooperative agreement 2025 from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $9,247,576 for various local public health programs.
Promoved. Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. Resolution 24-1496. Approval of a letter of agreement between Genesee County and Region 10 prepaid inpatient health plans in the amount of $34,108.42 to implement tobacco compliance services utilizing designated youth tobacco use representatives. The budget for this agreement is attached.
Promoved. Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. Resolution 24-1498. Approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Mott Children's Health Center in the amount of $66,511 to provide for the kindergarten oral health assessment program. The cost of this agreement is fully grant-funded.
Move approval. Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. Resolution 24-1503. Approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Saginaw County Community Action Committee to establish Genesee County as the lead agent to order, warehouse, allocate, and deliver USDA foods.
Move it.
Support.
Okay, properly moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. Resolution 24-1521. Approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Genesee Health Plan in an amount not to exceed $5 million to provide healthcare services to uninsured Genesee County residents. This is a millage-funded agreement.
Move approval with a question?
Any, okay, moved and supported. Dr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is this still a reimbursement model?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Through the chair to Mr. Freeman. A while back, we discussed some issues we'd had with this and some other areas of improvement we'd like to see. And I know the improvement areas had not taken place. Do we have to do anything with this right now? Or is this something we can actually work on, making, put some restrictions in place that this?
Yeah, I would suggest that we move on this. One of the reasons, you know, this starts with our fiscal year. One of the reasons we're late in bringing that to us is because there's a delay in reimbursement because, you know, they get medical claims. It takes a while to get reimbursed. So every year, this is a little bit late coming. I would suggest that we do move forward with it. And if the board is interested in, in looking at what our options are, that we do that in the new year.
Could we make that an action item for a workshop?
Absolutely.
Please, if the board is okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I know when Clerk Clemens was here, he and I had had some deep discussions about this and some concerns we'd had. And I still have those concerns. You know, with this fund was created back before the Affordable Care Act, you know, and there's still a large amount of it is actually distributed even though, you know, the federal government is covering a lot of these costs. And I think we could change some things around. There's a lot of other areas also. So next workshop, if we could add that in there, if the board's okay with that, I would love to discuss this further then.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. And this meeting now stands adjourned.
All right.
I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:45. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Present.
Commissioner Winfrey?
Here.
Commissioner Ellenberg?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Avery?
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Present.
Commissioner Kuzina?
Here.
Commissioner Wayhile?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Approval of November 13, 2024 minutes.
Still moved.
It's been moved. We have a support and supported. Any corrections? Any discussion? See and none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Any public comments? Is there any public comments from the audience? Third time, any public comments? See and none? Communicate, or comments closed? Any communications?
No, ma'am.
Old business?
No, ma'am.
New business? Okay, old business, new business. Resolution 2024-1387. Approval of a grant award from the Greater Flint Health Coalition in the amount of $32,650 to provide for coordination of programming and activities in the city of Flint neighborhood parks. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? See and none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2024-1402. Approval of a request from Genesee County Drain Commission to abandon an easement on county-owned property.
Still moved.
It's been moved.
Support with a question?
Supported. Any discussion? Mr. Shoemaker.
We need a little more about this. This is the first time I've ever seen something brought to us like this.
John O'Brien is here from our agency. Just looking for an explanation.
I'm just looking for a little more detail. I mean, I'm, you've brought us several things over the years, and I've never been asked that I can remember to abandon an easement and what the?
Yeah, whether it's abandonment easement or selling of property, we've been here before for selling. So basically, what happened is, is in the, in the early 80s, developer had an option on a farmland, submitted a plat development. Part of that plat development, they did not put in public roads, so they only put in for sewer and water easements with a private road. That was recorded. The project fell through, and it laid idle, and the farmer just kept farming the land. New owners have bought the land. They have a different intent for it, and they've requested that these easements be abandoned.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? See and none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2024-1411. Approval of the first change order?
Madam Chair, this one, they've requested to be dropped.
Okay.
Sorry.
Didn't know that. Resolution 2024-1433. Approval of a purchase order for Durango and Silverton for the fiscal year ending 2025 in the amount not to exceed $98,633 for the construction of one set, two trucks of roller bearing trucks for the Huckleberry Railroad. The cost of this purchase will be paid from the following account.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mr. Shoemaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through Josh, Parks Director's here. I just have a quick question. Is it po, through the chair? Is it possible that you could get us like a return on investment for the, for the railroad? I mean, I, I see all these large amounts come through there, and I know people, the people who use it like it, but, you know, these are some really big numbers when we talk these trains and the tracks and all the other stuff. And your predecessor, Barry and I would have conversations about this. And I just, you guys have something like that already? Have you ever done like a return on investment from?
Yep.
Could you just email me that when you get a chance? I'd appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Any further discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
See and none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Now, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to move items, agenda item five through 18.
Okay. Need a?
Support.
Second. Okay, we have a support to move items five through 18, which made my meeting really fast. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2024-1469. Approval of a purchase order to GM Coal Sales Company for the fiscal year ending 2025 in the amount not to exceed $35,000 to provide for the purchase of coal by the Genesee County Parks and Recreation Commission.
Still moved.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mr. Shoemaker.
Just real, does anyone know what the coal's being used for? Is it for the?
For the train.
Well, that's filthy. You guys are supposed to be environmentalists here. What the heck?
Yeah, it's for the steam locomotive and for the sawmill.
For the sawmill also?
Yes.
Oh, all right. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Aye.
See and none? Go ahead.
No, no, I'm, I'm good. I was just, I'm good, sorry.
Okay. See and none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2024-1470. Approval of a purchase order for various vendors for the fiscal year ending 2025 in the amount not to exceed $35,000 to provide for purchase of vehicle, equipment parts, and service for Genesee County Parks and Recreation. The cost is budgeted.
So moved.
Been moved?
Support.
Support? Any discussion? See and none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2024-1471. Approval of a purchase order for, to various vendors for the fiscal year of ending 2025 in the amount not to exceed $83,000 to provide for the purchase and retail merchandise and program supplies by Genesee County Parks and Recreation Commission.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? See and none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2024-1494. Approval of a grant award from the U.S. Department of Energy in the amount of $283,080 to provide for solar roofing project at the Genesee County Animal Control.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mr. Shoemaker.
First, through the chair, and I don't know who to answer, who can answer this. So these panels are going on the roof?
No. So last year, we went to a NACO conference in Austin, and they had a rooftop outdoor area at their library. And the cover for that was solar panels, which was just provided shade. But it also provided a benefit of, you know, putting, putting power into the building. So we have an area out front, animal control, those outdoor runs, that are in the sun all day long, and they've been asking for some sort of a cover there because the artificial turf gets too hot for the, for the paws. Yeah. So what we're looking at doing is that same type of an idea where we provide a cover over that, but it's, they're solar panels so that we gain a benefit from it as well. DOE had a program for this, and then they've, there is also a program where, where normally you would get a tax credit for doing some of this work. Well, municipals in the past weren't eligible for that because we don't file taxes, right? Well, they've got a direct pay option now where, once this is, once this is accepted, we'll also be able to get a tax credit as a direct pay for it. So we're thinking that ultimately, in the end, or we're hoping that ultimately, we'll have a very narrow gap that we'll have to fill to get those things covered and then also provide a benefit.
Mr. Shoemaker?
I hope that answered your question.
No, it did.
Yeah.
This is a touchy subject for a lot of people because I, I understand what we're trying to do, and I think it's, I think it's wonderful because I, it, a lot of pets do get their paws burnt, and we don't realize that they're hurting. And if you can get it covered under a grant, great to get it covered. My concern is, and you and I have talked about other things earlier today, that what do you do when you're done with it? What are the environmental, what are the plans to do with these? What are the costs going to be later on to dispose of these solar panels? These, these things just don't go away. They don't degrade, you know, as easily as other things. I think the, I can't remember what the life on one of them is once they're done and you put them in the ground to get rid of them. It's like these wind turbines that are out there forever. And that's, that's my concern, and these are things when they bring to us, it sounds like a great idea on the surface, but, I mean, I just don't know. Is there, could we by next meeting find, kind of figure out what you do with them when you're?
We can look into it.
When, when you're done with them, do they have, you know, from there, just if you could just, even Josh, just give me a call this week and let me know. I just, you know, it could be a problem for us later on because it could be a large cost to actually dispose of these later in life, you know? Just like these.
Let's see what we can find for you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? See and none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2024-1513. Approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Security Services USA Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $130,000 to provide unarmed security service at historic Crossroad Village. The term of this agreement is from January 6, 2025 through January 5, 2026. The cost of this agreement is budgeted.
So moved.
It's been moved?
Support.
And supported. Any discussion? Mr. Kuzina.
What are, what are the hours that these people are going to be hired for? Is this 24/7 or is it just during events or what? Is Patrick still?
Yes. So Commissioner, it is when staff are not there. So they primarily work third shift and then some second shifts when we don't have staff there.
Thank you.
Mr. Shoemaker.
Is this, this is nothing that our park rangers could handle?
So they work with the park rangers. Traditionally, we only have two rangers on shift, on third shift. So this just supplements that.
Go ahead.
A reason we didn't?
Mr. Shoemaker, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Is there a reason we didn't just continue to go with our park rangers for this?
So the history of this, there were security attendants probably 15, 20 years ago. And then at that time, they made the switch to the private security just because of the cost savings because they were full-time positions.
Go ahead.
May I continue? So cost, it's less expensive. And then if I'm going to continue, the other thing is they're unarmed. Where?
Correct.
Our park rangers are armed though.
Correct.
So, okay, I'm just, I'm sure I might, I might reach out to you because I've got, it's got my head spinning. So thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, I don't want to delay things.
Patrick, how many people with this cover?
So the staff is one lead and then four security guards, but it's one person per shift.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Hold on, Mr. Resolution.
Okay, see a nun? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Madam Chair, before you close out the committee, is there anything else?
We do have one add-on. I did pass it out at the beginning of the meeting, add-on number one for our Public Works. This is the resolution to approve a contract for the demolition of the old GVRC.
Motion added to the agenda?
Okay.
Support.
Or?
Okay, it's been motion and support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to full commission meeting.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. All those, any discussion?
What are we, what are we voting on right now? I'm sorry.
This is the add-on for the demolition of the-
We've added it, we've already added to the agenda now.
Moving it to the board.
Move to the board. Okay, so.
Mr. Kuzno.
This, this amount came in for less than what we originally anticipated.
It did, yeah. We had initially budgeted about $1 million for it. But when we went out to bid, if you look on the second page, we got a significant number of responses. And we were going with a low bid and asking for a bit of a contingency just in case when you're tearing down a hundred-year-old building, you never know what you're going to find.
I was just trying to go by memory and I was thinking it was more than a million we'd set aside.
One point, yeah, 1.7 million is what we expect the entire, but that's doing the parking lot and everything.
All right, so it came through a lot less.
Well, this is just for the demolition. This isn't the finishing the parking lot afterwards.
I understand that.
Yeah.
And, and basically they're qualified like for the abatement of asbestos and everything?
Yep, we've already taken care of that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any, Mr. Lloyd?
So I was looking at the spread of the bids that came in. The highest was like 1.8 million. The lowest was like 400 and something thousand dollars. And, you know, I know going with the low bid, obviously it saves the county money, but you know, there's been a lot of times where I may not have gone with a low bid in my vocational role because it may have been all of these other things that's a part of that, that justifies why the number should be higher. I only preface my comment this way because I'm just curious. You know, did they, being the lowest bidder out of like upwards of 10, I think, did they account for everything? My concern is, I don't want a situation where we set this contingency and then we come back because maybe they didn't think of something. And then now we've, you know, we're approving more money and then now they weren't the lowest bidder. They're maybe in the middle. So can you speak to that?
Derek can speak to that. He handled this process for us.
Sure. Through the chair, through Commissioner Lloyd. So we did develop this specification with the consultant as relates to that site as in terms of what needed to be demolished. And we put together a specification whereas the intent was to try to seek a vendor who would provide the lowest responsive bid to us. In doing so, we went through, the vendor had to submit various information. We went through everyone's information. We contacted OSHA, my OSHA, to make sure that this particular vendor did not have any type of major violations. And there was a bit of a, I guess, a communication blurb as relates to some of the, what needs to be demolished. There's one structure that does need to be demolished that was not included in the original specification. So-
Say that again?
There was one section of the demolition site in which we initially was not included in the original specification.
So and if you don't, if you don't mind, just so I can get there faster. You're saying this, this, what we're proving now, it doesn't include a building?
It does. It does. So with the content, I was trying to get to the contingency. So the contingency, when we reached out to the vendor, we stated that, you know, we wanted you to give us like an idea as relates to how much it will cost to get this particular structure down. And so we added that contingency, we added that amount to the contingency itself so that we are going to give the contractor a contract to not to exceed the amount that they submitted initially. And then by approving the contingency, if they do discover any type of unknowns, we'll be able to continue the work without any type of interruptions.
So-
Go ahead.
How do we protect the county? Because what I don't want, I'm not suggesting this bidder did that, but looking at the spread of bids, it just, it's a apparent concern for me. How do we safeguard the county in a situation? If somebody comes in low bid, we award this to them. We had a contingency, which I understand, but they come back and say, no, we need another $300,000. I mean, if we're, you know, contracting and we're saying it's 400 something plus the contingency, then we're, you know, the way I see it, if they come back beyond that after they had the time to go through the property and, you know, you gave up the specifics, that it will be on them. So if they come back, hey, we need two more $100,000 in addition contingency, we can't get it done, then we're in a situation where they're coughing up $200,000 to complete the project because they bitted it, they go through the details and they told us that this is how much that they will do the complete job for.
So we take the approach of what you just said. We tell them no. And there is, our security is, is that there's a performance bond. So with the performance bond, as you know, we basically hold them accountable based on that.
Okay.
So that's, that was part of the actual specification in terms of, one of the things that they had to submit was performance bond.
The, the other piece I was going to ask you about was about the, so if they're just taking the structure down, then we have something else coming back to us to, you know, level the ground? That's part A of the question. The part B, if I may, is were there other bidders that included the buttoning up of the entire property as a part of their bid?
Yeah, I don't believe we bid it that way.
Right. So everyone got, the bid specification and the information we got back was based on the bid specification. So it was apples to apples. Everyone had the same information and they provided the pricing based on that specific specification.
So it's building only?
It's building and it's some asphalt along with some green space as well.
Quick, quick questions. Is there a reason we didn't bid the whole thing? Like if we go out and demolish houses or whatever the case may be, it's going to be tearing down the house and backfilling the hole?
Yeah, we're doing, it's, there's, staff parking is ultimately going to be on that site. That's going to be that phase two. So they're going to get that ready so that we then can hire a contractor to come in and do the paving that we need to do.
Okay.
We didn't want to bid that out now with the way the season is because we don't know what's going to happen next year.
I understand. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I'm seeing the bid is obviously at the $494,984. I'm seeing in our resolution here though, it's $545,000. That's for-
That's what he mentioned was it's contingency, but also tearing down a garage out there that we initially thought we might want to keep and use it for storage, but it would be out there like on an island by itself. So we're looking at other options of, for storage.
So this is, what we're really proving is a little higher than the 494 because we got the outbuilding.
Yeah.
Yeah, but understand that the contract itself would be in an amount not to exceed what they submitted to us.
Yep.
We're not going to necessarily give them this contingency.
Right.
No, I understand that. But like I said, there's additional cost. This isn't the actual-
Right.
Can we get that by next meeting? Is there a way to get that?
Um, yeah, what now?
With the, with the additional building. So when we're-
The building, that additional garage down.
Oh, and one of the costs? Sure. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Madam Chair, before you close out the meeting, there's two pieces that I want to raise before we wrap tonight. One is a follow-up and one is an emerging issue that's happening in my district. Number one, the sale of the county administration building, because it's Public Works, the sale of the county administration building. Can you give us an update, Mr. Freeman, as to where we are in terms of the sale? That's part one. The second part of that is, one of the things that I've raised and I want to raise here is that I would like to see whoever's purchasing this building before we finalize a sale, that they come before the commission and share what their plan is for this property. This is a large property. It's, I know it's in your district, but here our county seat, very, very important property. Know that there's interest and so on and so forth. But I think that it's important that whoever we're going to ultimately sell this large parcel of property to, that they come before this commission and they share with the group before we finalize a sale, what is the plan? And to allow the commission an opportunity to raise any questions, to mention any ideas, what, and so on and so forth. I just want to make sure that we don't rush through to a sale and for the, you know, for this property and not have someone come and present to us their plan and give us opportunity to ask questions and such. So can you tell, update where we are? And what's the plan for bringing folks?
Sure. So you remember the board approved us to enter negotiations with the MTA on the site. MTA had been doing whatever they were doing, some background work. They re-engaged with us. In the interim, we had an appraisal done on the site. Property value came back at negative three and a half million dollars. MTA needed to have discussion with their board. There's, some of you are members on the MTA board. I'm not sure which ones are. They had to do some discussion with their board on how they wanted to move forward and they, I think they have a committee that they're working on. But our hope is to get some sort of a deal before you, before we move out of the building. And I understand that you had previously requested of me that they came and presented a plan as part of that discussion or presentation to you.
Because what I don't want to do is, is not in a tension to scare off a pitcher, buyer, MTA or anybody, but I think that's important for, you know, they need to come. So public understand what's the plan because ultimately we got to vote. So I just want to raise that. Is it possible to have them come? Well, we can wait to a, to a deal.
Yeah, I don't know where they are in their planning process, so.
Understand. Okay, and then the second piece. You know, within my district, Hasselbrung Community Center is a coveted, a very well-respected place that has been a place of recreation, a place of fellowshipping and a meeting place for seniors throughout the community, not just in the city of Flint. When I was city councilperson, Hasselbrung was inside of my district. I worked hard and utilized some senior millage money as well to purchase pool tables and furniture and to provide some technical equipment for them and such. And so I want to raise Hasselbrung tonight because I received a notification that's very concerning. There's been some dispute back and forth between the city and the folks that are running Hasselbrung Senior Center about a future lease agreement. I've had meetings and conversations with the mayor of the city of Flint, meetings and conversations with folks at Hasselbrung to try to do my part to encourage a resolution of a lease dispute at that particular center. The reason for my engagement is the concerns of the seniors in my district about continuing to have Hasselbrung as a place that they're able to, to fellowship, to congregate, to receive service and to recreate. And so tonight, a letter was issued from the city of Flint, from Mayor Neely's office to Hasselbrung Center. It's actually a notice to quit and for the center to vacate the property by no later than January 5th, 2025. And I won't get into the details of what the dispute is and so on and so forth because it's a, it's a vendor of the city and it's city-owned property. Well, why am I raising it as a county commissioner? Of two reasons. Number one, the seniors that frequent that center not only are the constituents of the city of Flint, but they're constituents of mine, of ours at the county as well. That's number one why I raise it. Number two, I raise it because we recently passed a resolution